I've got bone problems here.
All right, we are good to go.
All right, I would like to call the Meeker County Board of Commissioners' regular session Tuesday, July 1st, 2025 to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone here from the public who would like to make comment? Hearing none. The agenda. Any additions or corrections?
Nope, not today, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll move the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Olberg. Is there a second by Commissioner Van Orte? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Well, Minnesota Extension Crops educator, Taylor Herbert, and you're gonna introduce some people to us. Yep, please.
Sit, stand, your choice.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioners. Today, I would like to present the 2025 Meeker County Farm Family of the Year. They know things about you. Oh, we got a picture of them as well. All right, so the University of Minnesota Farm Family Recognition Program honors farm families from throughout Minnesota for their significant contributions to the agricultural industry and their local communities. The program has honored Minnesota farmers since 1979 and is coordinated by the University of Minnesota Extension, the College of Food and Natural Resource, Food Agriculture and Natural Resource Sciences, and the College of Veterinary Medicine. The families are recognized statewide in August, as well as on the local level. The Meeker County Farm Family will be honored at Meeker County Fair during the 4-H Dairy Auction on Saturday, so join us there. Honor families are chosen, one per county, by local University of Minnesota Extension committees based on their demonstrated commitment to their communities and to enhancing and supporting agriculture. Allgren Dairy and the Rick and Sarah Allgren family have been selected to be the 2025 Meeker County Farm Family of the Year. Rick's father, David, and his brothers built and started the dairy farm in Darwin that Rick and Sarah returned to in 2013 after living off the farm. They purchased the dairy operation in 2018 where they milked 220 cows and raised replacement heifers. Rick and Sarah now manage all aspects of the farm, along with help from the rest of the family and a few part-time employees. Allgren Dairy is focused on the future. They built a new dairy barn in 2020 with milking and feeding robots, plant cover crops to build soil health as they grow forages for the dairy. They also installed solar panels in 2024 and are currently building a new heifer barn. They also have a focus on family and teamwork, and all the kids have jobs on the farm. Philip helps with milking, fieldwork, and general maintenance. Matthew works in the dairy barn and helps wherever he is needed. Jacob does bedding and feeding for their herd and helps his brother with fieldwork. Olivia is the calf barn manager, where Henry and Nora help feed calves and raise chickens, too. Their involvement in the community should also be commended. They are active in their local 4-H Club, where Philip is the current president. Several family members also compete in the Dairy Project Bowl and show animals and showcase projects at the Meeker County Fair. Finally, the Allgrens have hosted the public at the farm for tours and trainings, as well as their live nativity play to celebrate the true meaning of Christmas. Please join me in congratulating Allgren Dairy for all their hard work and demonstration of a true family farm as the 2025 Meeker County Farm Family of the Year.
Who manages, I heard one of you managed the calf barn. Which one? Wow, who are you? What a beautiful family. What a beautiful family.
Rick and Sarah, maybe you would introduce us to the kids?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Philip is our oldest. He's not here right now. He's working a full-time job in the summer. So Matthew is our second oldest, and then Jacob on the end, and then Olivia, and Henry. And Nora's our youngest. Yeah, we just, yeah, we really thank you. It's an honor and privilege. Growing up on the farm, I always had a dream of continuing the family farm. And at that time, we weren't, there wasn't really room on the farm because there was already three families being supported. So we, I worked off the farm and we raised our first three kids or started raising them off the farm and was involved, very limited, for about 10 years. And we just decided like, hey, if we don't make a step towards getting back into the farm, like intentionally, it probably won't happen. As you know, the family farms just kind of disappear year after year. And so we made that move. It wasn't a very, probably, good financial move. But there, you know, there's greater things in life than finances. And it really worked out well because we, yeah, then we had our next three kids on the farm and eventually, you know, was able to take it over. And yeah, it's been kind of a whirlwind the last, oh, gosh, five or six years of just a lot of changes and improvements. And, but it's been, it's been great. We're really happy to be there. And yeah, hopefully we'll be there for many generations to come.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
He talked about 2020 and their new operation. I was campaigning back then and met these folks right there on their farm. It's a nice place, really nice place, and got to know you then. So they are from Ellsworth Township, District 3.
Just saying. He's just throwing that in. So 220 dairy cows?
Yeah, that's about our entire herd, the dry cows and milking.
I guess I know what you guys are doing a couple of times a day.
Well, we have milking robots.
Oh, cool, that's right.
A lot.
Wow.
So gives us flexibility and a little less labor needed.
So, just quickly, do they do everything, or just, I don't know much about milking robots?
It's a very, it's a very free choice design. The cows are essentially housed in a barn where they can eat whenever they want, sleep whenever they want, and visit a one of three milking stations where, I mean, it's all, they all have collars and if they want to the station, the computer system knows which cow is in there. And based on parameters and efficiencies, it'll decide whether it's going to milk that cow or not. So they either get sent out of the station or the, you know, robot will start to clean and prep and attach the milking unit. And it's a lot, it's very involved. So if you ever want to tour, just let me know.
Well, I would love to. We'll do a work session when.
That would be great.
That is really interesting.
So, Rick, are they, I've always heard that they want to go to the same spot every time. Is that true or not? They want to be milked in that same stall at the same?
Uh, it's for certain cows.
It is.
Not all. Some will visit, you know, a couple different stations. Some only like one. You know, it's, every cow's different.
Wonderful.
Well, could we get a picture of one of the commissioners?
Absolutely. Yep.
Congratulations.
That's gonna be a long picture.
Do you want this right in front of here, or do you want?
Wherever you want us.
What, what's the word, while?
We can stand with them.
You guys want to go over there? Why don't you go by them? And then do it in front of that wall there.
Plus, they're all on camera, so it'll work out well. Everybody see me? One, two, three.
Congratulations.
You work it hard.
Oh, it's, it's not, it's my work ethic.
I get to shake Nora's hand.
Oh, there's been a lot of progress in farming.
Yeah, congratulations.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They did, oh, did we clap already?
Yes.
Sorry, I love to.
All right. County Administrator Lutzen, would you please run the consent agenda for us, please?
Yes, we have the approval of the June 17th Board Meeting Minutes, approval of the June 17th, 18th Board of Appeal and Equalization Meeting Minutes, approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable, approval of temporary liquor licenses for the American Legion and Three-Sun Seltzer, approval of a fee increase for well disclosure, and that is the consent agenda.
Does anyone have any questions or wish to have something moved to the main agenda? Hearing no questions, I would look for a motion to approve the consent.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I see no.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Orte. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Mary Ellen and Tyler.
Morning.
Good morning.
Turn it over to Tyler and then come back for a couple of closing comments. Just a couple of highlights over the past month. The first one is we did go to the city for the Planning Commission and then the City Council for approval to vacate Lockerbie. So the street in front of the hospital. That gives us now the opportunity, the permission, if you will, to further explore the new building that would attach to the front of the hospital. We're calling it the Ambulatory Care Edition. So we're in the finals, we've issued an RFP for construction companies. So they're finding us with bids that we will know then, in roughly mid-August, what the cost estimates will be. And we'll have it close enough that we can then come to the hospital board and then the county, you folks, for approval to proceed. And we would expect then to be able to break ground in the spring. So that's the current plan. One other that I'd like to make a comment about, and I, you know, we've been working hard to develop a close collaborative relationship with all entities in our community. And the county certainly stands above many of those entities. And I have to say, it came to life, it brings tears to my eyes. So, so, cool to see. On Saturday, you know, we had a tornado warning and, you know, the, it was a pretty serious one. And I'm not sure what happened, but the county's shelter wasn't available. So our staff had a call asking if the shelter, the hospital's lower level, the conference room that we have in the lower level, could be used as a temporary shelter. And we did. And I guess there were over a dozen people who came and sheltered in place.
And I heard last night also four dogs. Four dogs, I heard also. I saw a staff member last night.
That doesn't happen automatically. That happens through hard work, collaboration. Andrew, really appreciate working with you and the sheriff and Brandy, all of you. But it wasn't us who made that arrangement. It was the staff. And that's what's cool, to see it permeating throughout the whole, our organizations to work together. So that's, on that happy note, I'm gonna turn it to Tyler to give more sobering, but good news.
Yeah, so financials so far this year, we have through April. 2025 so far, that's what our board has approved up to this point. But on the balance sheet, still holding very strong. We're steadily increasing our cash and cash equivalents. On the flip side, we are seeing a little bit higher accounts payable, which is just a timing issue. We have 30 days to pay our bills and where we're at in that cycle can influence the accounts payable balance. So that's the increase there. That impacts our current ratio slightly, tick downward, but again, no concern there. And then our days cash on hand is remaining very strong, so that's great to see. On the income statement side of things, our revenues are slightly over budget for the year, which is great to see. I think more importantly, though, is the relationship between revenues and expenses. Because if you're over budget on revenues, but over even further on expenses, you're still in hot water there. But fortunately, we've had a renewed focus on expense control this year. And it's really showing up in the statement where we're over budget on revenues and significantly under budget on expenses. And so that's very tough to do, and that's really a testament to all of our management team at the hospital. So so far this year, we have an operating margin of 8.2% and a total margin of 11.1%. And so very, very strong start to the year. We're now right in the middle of our slower time. And so I anticipate those revenues to decrease a little bit over the summer. But we're poised to have a strong year so far, so.
So, Mary Ellen or Tyler, is that kind of the national trend to have a little uptick this year? Or is it, are we just unique in that?
I would not say it's the national trend, no. No. Every, especially rural health, every hospital is a little bit different. And, you know, a lot of times, revenues are capped at the population and the competition around and that sort of thing. And so that revenue kind of is what it is. On the expense side of things, that's where you can really take control and really be efficient and cut costs. And that's what we've tried to do this year. And we're having success so far.
Yeah, it isn't, it isn't the national trend. And, you know, you've seen the headlines and the news about the current debate in Washington, what's going to potentially happen to Medicare and Medicaid. It's, we're uncertain. It's uncertain times. We are unlike some rural communities where we do have a healthy commercial insurance base. That's a testament to our diverse economic community. However, we still have a significant portion of our revenue comes from Medicare and Medicaid. So anytime there's a restriction or a reduction, we do feel it. So, but not as much as some other rural communities. And in the current legislation, you know, we rely on the American Hospital Association and the Minnesota Hospital Association to be our advocates in Washington and St. Paul. And they're telling us that this is, the debate that's going on right now is going to significantly impact rural health, healthcare, more so than in any other sector. We'll see. There are some balancing factors in the current legislation that will help offset some of those losses for rural communities. We're not sure yet on how those will play out, so we're watching it very carefully.
That would affect you in '26?
I'm sorry?
Probably affect you in '26, not '25, '26 and beyond.
Right.
I think there was some talk, I shouldn't listen to it, but about extending it out farther, the changes and the different debate. And this is difficult for me because I believe people need to work, you know? I believe there should be a work clause on Medicaid. But I also know, and correct me if I'm wrong, if someone comes to the emergency room and they have no insurance, we take care of them.
Yeah.
And when they leave, what happens to the bill?
It gets written off internally, and so then we characterize that as charity care or community benefit.
So, the hospital, you know, there's two, my point is, something has to balance. And there's two, everybody knows I'm conservative, but there's, I worry about the hospital because we have to have that there for the entire community. So hopefully, mine's, you know, hopefully they'll work something out where there's an extension of time to get it into, I also worry about, Cheryl and I were just talking. So you have to go to work, and you work 20 hours, and now you lose your Medicaid, but you can't afford health insurance either. So you're stuck in the middle. It's just a, you know, it's a catch 22. It's complicated. And people say, just get them off. It's not that easy. It's just not that easy, so.
And your vacation, vacating of Lockerbie did not seem to meet any real opposition?
Boy, we met with all of our neighbors. We had a session before we took it to the city. And, you know, anytime there's a change, it can impact people's lives. And there was a reluctance on some, and others saying, we want a strong healthcare system in our community. We have to support this. And we'll take measures to ensure that the impact is as minimal as possible on our neighbors with privacy fencing, with lighting that doesn't invade their areas and other measures that we, we have to be good neighbors.
And I think some of that, Paul, is because of the good communication that staff has had with the neighbors and the city. They didn't have to have a special meeting with the neighbors, but they did. And I just think the more you showcase the hospital, the more on-board our community is. So I really appreciate your staff doing all that.
That will also allow you to turn that entrance so it actually faces.
Yes.
Yeah, there's that, so they know what we have there.
There's actually a hospital there.
Any other questions for? Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate, appreciate everything you do, the fantastic things that we keep hearing about Meeker.
Absolutely.
You know, you're doing a great job of advertising them, too, when they do happen, and I think that's important.
Absolutely.
You got the big swing coming up in August.
Big swing, ooh. Billy's taking a said yes back there. I don't know what that means.
I got the day off.
Uh-oh. Good for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lots of good news today.
Well, our next up is our resolution establishing temporary no wakes on designated lakes and attachments. Are you here representing our sheriff?
Bill Hudson, Chief Deputy with the Sheriff's Office. So what we found out with, normally with no wakes and that, every summer, we've worked with the DNR. What they would classify as high water marks and with local lake associations. The DNR, I think it was their interpretation of the state statute said, no, it has to go through the county board having it. And so I think what we're doing here is to establish, when we can, if the county board gives us permission, when the lake levels, obviously, this year has been kind of crazy. Instead of having to come back every single week, can we get a no wake? If we can set some dates here, and then we'll keep monitoring the lake levels, working with the lake associations, and then we will post the landings of no wakes and what have you.
I know Deputy Swisher has always been really good about, you know, I'm on, live on Lake Manuel, a Lake Manuel aboard. He's always been so good about saying, here's the situation, here's the situation, we're gonna have to consider it. So it is important to the shorelines of, just to preserve our lakes, period.
Yep.
Not to mention the shorelines that are unprotected because there's been nothing done to them to protect them, so.
So this resolution establishes a low no wake order for the next 30 days, which is the maximum that the board can do at any given time under a single emergency. It identifies it on the lakes in which the Sheriff's Office gets the most complaints, which is Big Swan Lake, Lake Arvila, Lake Erie, Lake Minibel, Lake Manuel, and Star Lake, or any other lakes that are above the lake's ordinary high water line, so.
So then if it needs to continue, they have to come back.
So what will happen then is, we'll see on, when we get to my, and my, the agenda, we have setting a public hearing for a proposed ordinance, which would automatically put this in place so that we don't have to come forward with a resolution each time. The challenge that we face is that, you know, a situation like we had a week and a half ago, we've had a lot of rain, the lakes are at a high level, we'd like to put a no wake order in place, but we have to wait for the next county board meeting to do that. And we want to be calling emergency meetings just to do those things. So this, we're automatically putting it in place. There's a number of other counties that have done the same thing, and so we'll, but we need to schedule that public hearing. This gets us to that point.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2025-7, establishing a temporary no wake on designated lakes.
Motion by Commissioner Olberg. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Van Orte. Further discussion? Hearing none. Corey, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Orte?
Yes.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, Bill. Morning, Phil.
Good morning. Phil Schmals, Public Works Director. One item for consideration of the board this morning. If you remember, back in late May, we had to close our Casat 26 bridge crossing south of Cedar Mills due to deterioration of a timber member under the bridge. I'm coming to you today with an engineering services agreement for getting started on the design for the replacement of that bridge. So it's kind of a two-step process. We do a design and then we need a consultant to help us oversee construction, too. So if you look at the breakdown, that's why you see the design estimate and the construction services estimate. I solicited three consultants. One was able to provide full services, one partial, and the other one unavailable. Just so you're aware, there's two other consultants I solicited for the Casat 2 bridge, the last bridge we looked at for design. And their fees were substantially higher than these that we took to work with. This time, I only asked three. So yeah, first step in getting movement towards replacement of that bridge.
Questions of Phil? They're going easy on you today, Phil. I know.
Someone has to.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve an engineering services agreement with Erickson Engineering of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, from estimated cost of $149,024 for design and construction engineering services related to the replacement of existing bridge number 47504.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Van Orte. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Phil. Understand, you've been working with the supervisor from Akoma Township over some stuff down in that area.
Yeah, that's probably partially related to this bridge closure, a little additional traffic. I was actually out there Saturday just to see traffic patterns. It's not much, but you know, in those low-volume township gravel roads, going from 50 cars a day to 75 feels substantial. But yeah, I'm in discussions with Akoma Township over that.
Yeah, Tom said he appreciated you working with them on that because, you know, that's McLeod.
Right.
Yeah, we're currently doing an actual traffic count just to establish what the volume is today and then we can make decisions moving forward.
Because that's probably gonna be next year, isn't it?
Funding is the challenge. You know, we'll get it designed and ready to build for 2026. I'm not too worried about that. It's how we decide to pay for it, it's gonna be. We'll discuss that when we talk about budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Excuse me, Phil, are you around later? I want to touch base with you about the email we sent me.
Yeah, I have a meeting at 1:00, so otherwise, I'll make it a point to be around.
Perfect, thank you.
Tina Schenk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our Health and Human Services Director. Sounds like you're bringing forth a resolution for us.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Tina.
As we discussed in the work session, we're bringing forth a resolution that asks, that directs us to formally announce our intention to explore alternative governance structure opportunities and models for the Community Health Board. And we had discussed this at last week's work session. And we had discussed this at last week's work session.
Do we need, just want to go right to the motion?
Uh, we can, because then we can have discussion after that.
Move to approve a resolution announcing the county's intent to explore alternative governance structures to perform the duties of the Community Health Board as outlined in Minnesota Statute one forty-five A.
We have a motion by Commissioner Olberg, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samke. Now for discussion. Questions? Um, I have one, Tina. As we explore our alternative governance structures, should we start to encounter some costs? We could tap into the money that they got for the consulting.
It's my understanding, and I haven't talked to Kaiser directly, but it's my understanding that she suggested that there could be some agreement with that. Yes, it, I think technically the word is to the CHS, so, um, it isn't directly under our purview, but I believe that there's some desire to be cooperative with that, yes.
So the Meeker-McLeod Sibley, uh, the Community Health Board at this point, are they aware that we are looking at other options?
Yeah, Mr. Letson, let them know, yeah.
Okay.
And that is also what this resolution is intended to?
To to solidify that.
Provide that formal notification.
Okay.
I also provided notice as well. I provided notice in advance as well.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
No, just understand that this might not even be possible to do, so we're just gonna explore all options. We're not going in there with our mind to anything, it could turn out bad.
We could be still be with them.
Still be with them, but I think we, um, it it's just something we need to explore, for sure, so.
Hearing no other discussion, we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Samke?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Ort?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, resolution passes. Now we're off to an annual report.
Good morning, I'm Melissa Stone Lake, um, supervisor for the Min Choices Unit and the over sixty-five waivers and AC unit here at Meeker. I've worked in these programs since two thousand ten, so hopefully have some answers if you have questions. Min Choices itself started in two thousand fourteen and has been since the start of very complex and fully detailed assessment that we offer to anybody who requests one, regardless of age, age, and regardless of income. We have a host of different waivers, depending on your age, depending on your disability status and your diagnosis. So for the elderly, um, for people under sixty-five, we have CADDY, um, CAC, brain injury, DD, Rule one eighty-five, and you can see them, the acronyms described. We also have a new program that started last October. I'm sure you are all familiar with PCA, but it was eliminated and replaced with CFSS, Community First Services and Supports. So we are just kind of halfway, half a year into that new program. Next. The assessment itself, if printed out, is about fifty pages long. There's an awful lot of questions that just help find a really person-centered, detailed and focused, um, determination of what they might be eligible for. What are their needs? How can we best support them with the goal and goal of keeping people in their homes and out of facilities? Meeker County has been providing these since two thousand fourteen. There's an annual or an initial assessment for people who request one, and then every year we have to complete an annual reassessment to make sure that they are still eligible for the same program, or perhaps a different program, or maybe moving off the waiver, which would be like the optimal result that we don't see often. There's no income limit if you request one, because we can always at least provide resources. Even if we can't find you eligible for a program, there are an awful lot of resources that can be provided. So we go out with a big resource packet, um, and we direct people in whatever direction we might feel best meets their needs. Min Choices paid for through the Random Moments Time Study, so we get hits and we are reimbursed. It is a forty-five percent state share and a fifty-five percent federal share, although, as we know in this year's budget, they're looking to decrease our state share or find a way to make it a flat rate. In two thousand twenty-four, our revenue from Min Choices was the five hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars, and you can see the split of what was federal and what was state. Go ahead. I have four full-time assessors, and then I have two half-time, so technically five. And all of my managed care case managers, my Blue Plus case managers, my Prime West case managers are required to be certified assessors. So you have you have to go through a certification process to become a Min Choices Assessor, and then you have to renew that process every three years with the required number of CEUs and twelve of those being person-centered. My teams work with every team here at HHS in very close coordination. Obviously, financial eligibility is a piece of it. We have to work with all the waiver providers, we work with the mental health team, we work with the children's team. So we just kind of touch all the teams because we're assessing all those groups.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So first of all, can you explain what a random moment time study does?
So we have the LTSS, the Long Term Social Services something or another study, maybe? Yes. That is, it's a hit that we get through this state program that asks, what are you working on at this moment?
So they they call you up and say, what are you doing?
On your computer via email.
It'll come up and say, what are you doing at this moment?
What are you doing right now?
That's how they judge what you're, I wanted you to know that, because you know, I always saw what a bunch of, but I don't know, must be working.
So then if you say, I'm working with this program, it generates revenue. If you say, I'm doing random, I'm on vacation, I'm on lunch, I'm, I don't know, taking a break. Whatever you say, then that's no revenue. But if you can say you're working with people on medical assistance on programs, or trying to get on medical assistance on programs, that generates revenue. So we have codes we can choose from to say what we are doing at that moment. So that is the only way that Min Choices generates revenue.
I remember the first time I heard about that, I thought, they gotta be kidding me, I mean, but it's been going on a while.
Yeah, a long time, since since, almost since inception. And a Min Choices assessment itself, like for an initial assessment, can take up fifteen, sixteen hours. So you just hope you get a hit during that time, and then the reassessments take a little bit less time because you have all of the previous year's information.
My other question is maybe more for you, Andrew. I think we've done some hiring, and it was getting paid for out of Min Choices.
Yeah, I believe that we hired an additional assessor in one of the previous couple of years.
If I remember Paul saying it'll it'll never go away, we're gonna hire, do you remember these conver-? So now when I look at this, I wonder, is that gonna affect budgeting, depending on what they do?
So in in the final state budget that came out this this year for this biennium, there was no changes that I'm aware of that, if I remember correctly. It directly impacted where revenue was coming in from, yes, we don't know what's coming from the federal level. That could potentially impact things, but.
I just, when I was reading this, I thought, I remember the times we hired, and previous director said, that's just easy, right? So now it's just more to think about, obviously, so.
There was that last-minute deal put in the budget from the state that attempts to move the state's share to a flat rate. And we don't know what that means yet. There was discussion at Maxa last week about that. Listen, I have a question about, because this is this is overseen by CMS. Yeah, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, and it, I don't think that anyone consulted them before they did this, is what it, because it was like a midnight-type addition. So we're not sure what they're gonna, how they're gonna manage that.
My feeling is that would not be the best thing, probably, but.
So under that LCTS, you must get credit, you must earn revenue. Just because they hit you on those sporadic times, you still must be gaining revenue by your coding, right?
Well, it's not for the Min Choices Assessment time.
Yeah, so there's, we talked about this a little bit, um, last week. Social services area is really complicated in how we generate revenue. So we have, um, we have the direct way, like like a, like Mary Ellen does, right? Where you get a service and we bill for that time that you're getting that service. Then we have another one where, no matter how much we work with you, if we see you once in that month face-to-face, then we get a set amount of dollars. That's called a hit rate, right? This i- and several other program areas are, they build an allocation. So, um, the the SSTS time study is how they determine how much time, um, we're using towards that program area. All of all of the social services area, they're not all social workers, but all of the social services areas involved in that time study, and and puts in those codes. So for instance, um, some of our child protection, their allocations are also built the same way by the SSTS time study. Uh, and then we also, actually, Missy's gonna be taking that over, um, quarterly, we we build a profile for them of who we have on staff. So they also know our staff costs. Charlene puts into what's called our SEGA report all of our indirect costs as well, like our rent, you know, our copy fax costs, our cell phone costs. So all of those pieces go into creating these allocations. And I think Min Choices is probably the most impacted by that. We see for child protection, we see a pretty low and steady allocation, right? Like it's a hundred thousand dollars-ish, and it's been like that forever. The Min Choices allocation really can be impacted by the staff's ability to complete those random moments, and, you know, we have to do so honestly. And they they don't get credits when they put in for like on vacation or whatever, but the county still has costs when people go on on vacation. So that is factored into that overall cost with each staff position. It's really a complicated way to pay folks to do this work. And yet, when they change it, that worries us, because I think we've been able to really capitalize on, you know, when you when you look at a, the cost of a social worker or nurse in that role is about a hundred thousand dollars, you know, Missy has five, and that revenue line was. So, you know, we're we're definitely, um, speaking to your point, Commissioner Olberg, we we should really be paying. This program does pay currently for our staff. If it goes down, then we get concerned about it.
When they get this email, this random moment type, how long does it take for them to, i- is this a simple question? Or so it's not time-consuming for them to answer this?
You click a link, and then it brings you to this, you have a list of options to choose from, and it's just a bullet point, I'm doing this right now. If they are out, they have twenty-four hours to respond to the initial one, and then they'll get a reminder that you haven't responded to this yet. If they are out, out, vacation, whatever, then Tina or I can respond saying that they were not generating any revenue at that time. So yes, no, it's very quick and easy to respond to.
You know, hearing quick and easy, that's something we don't hear very often from social services, because.
I just, I just remember when that this started, I'm like, how is this even gonna work that way, you know?
This is what it looks like.
Apparently it does.
Yeah, that's the email that you get, and then there's just a link to click on.
So this is the time, they want to know what they were doing at twelve fifteen P M. And if we click on this link.
And so they're trusting that this, that 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 this person that receives this email is going to be honest?
Yes.
Do they have a way of checking that?
Yeah, is there any oversight of it?
Well, they could look in SSIS, our documentation system, and see what was documented as being done at that time versus what they chose. I don't know how often that kind of oversight happens, but they would have that ability.
I'm guessing there's patterns.
Okay, okay.
And that one had been completed, so that, yeah, I couldn't show you the code list, but, um.
And we can choose, we have some people, some staff who choose to work alternate schedules, right? Like maybe they work seven-thirty to three instead of eight to four-thirty, or whatever the case is. We, in that system, we can say, this staff works these hours, so that they're not getting hits outside of their hours. So they're not getting hits at four-thirty every time when they actually sign out at three. So we can go in and say, who works what hours?
Okay.
All right, and then how frequently would you expect to get a hit?
It is so random, that's Random Moments Time Study, but you might get five in a week and not get any for four weeks. So it's it's really hard to say.
How, which is how it's supposed to be.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It is kind of interesting, we've always said, it's really funny how many you get, right about noon, you know? Or right at the end of the day. Yeah, uh, but it is, and and sometimes you can even get two in the same day, you have to be, that's really tricky, because you think you already did it, you know, you you already did that one first day. Yes, you have to look, they want to know at twelve fifteen, what were you doing, and at three oh five, what were you doing? So you have to pay attention to the time specified, but. We were struggling with this, but we set up backup systems, so those emails are all forwarded to me right now. And like I said, Missy's gonna take that over, and then we're gonna add in each area supervisor. So if somebody's on vacation, we we can't go in and answer any code other than that sixty-nine code, which indicates they're on sick leave, vacation, break, lunch. But we don't want to miss those either, because a missed missed is the worst. So we can go in and put in that they're on vacation this week, because they may not return in time before it expires. So we've put those systems in place, um, and recently, our eligibility unit has to do this too, and and that supervisor also did that. So we're not missing any of these, and it has, I think, impacted our revenues, so. I, and I got you, there you go.
Oh, yes, our, the number of referrals, the number of requests we get for assessments has grown every year since inception. Um, I did not include data all the way back to two thousand fourteen, but you can see from two thousand twenty-one to where we are at in two thousand twenty-five, and that was from six-five. We've probably added thirty, um, since six-five. So every year, the number of requests for assessments goes up, which is awesome, because we want to be able to reach the people in the community and let them know that we're here, that, you know, we can attempt to find them the support that they need. So that is a combination of reassessments, the annual one, and the new referrals. So those are our, those are our numbers. Rule one eighty-five, that's just a definition of one of the programs that is not a waiver, it's not, I don't even know how to describe it, really, but just one for people with developmental disabilities that offers support on a non-waiver basis. Sixty-five plus elderly waiver and AC. I have six case managers who work in the sixty-five plus programs. They work with people who are not on managed care and people who are on managed care, Blue Plus or, um, Prime West. And we attempt to provide the supports needed to keep people in their homes and out of the more expensive nursing home option. They go through the same Min Choices Assessment process, and then they are managed by the over sixty-five case managers. Again, we're trying to meet their individual needs, um, and find them options beyond just your basic MA services or your formerly PCA, now CFSS services. There is also support for caregivers, so that if you are a caregiver of an elderly spouse, elderly parent, there's a lot of support available for them as well, which we share when we go visit. You have to be on medical assistance, you do not have to be on managed care, but you can be. And we have about a hundred elderly waiver clients in Meeker County right now. Our numbers were almost double that before, um, COVID closed a lot of our local facilities. We would love to bring more back to the area, um, so that we could serve more people. Right now, we just don't have local facilities to serve people in, so they would end up going out of county and out of their home area, which many would choose not to do.
Yeah, and I think that, when we think about that, that just their overall health and the health of our community, you know, keeping, keeping those folks in their local community with their natural supports available to them is.
We, for full care, we have Meeker Manor, Lakeview and Dassel.
We have Hilltop in, um, Watkins.
Dassel, Meeker, Hilltop.
Yeah, the three.
Which have how many beds collectively, a hundred?
Oh, yeah, probably close. No, I would say that's probably close, because, do they have fifty-fifty? I don't either.
We don't have, a lot of us, uh, skilled nursing facility beds, but I think our bigger shortage right now is more the customized or assisted living beds. but I think our bigger shortage right now is more the customized or assisted living beds.
Okay.
Those are the ones that we lost.
Those are the ones that we lost through Covid.
So we had, what, fifteen or sixteen out in these two facilities by Dassel and rural Darwin. Those both closed.
And then we went down.
And then we lost Bethany and something else here in town.
Oh, boy, yeah. Before my Meeker County.
And I haven't spent my area of expertise.
I know, we lost a couple here in town and then we lost the two by Dassel, um which were a fair number of beds, um so.
And they were fairly new too, weren't they?
They're beautiful.
They're beautiful buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I heard, I think I heard one of them got sold, but not going to be for what you'd like it.
Yep, not not to meet our needs, but hopefully to meet a community need.
Yes, we're in communication with that person, but um it's not not for this type of service.
Oh, okay.
Then the alternative care program is actually a grant um that has just been continued and continued and continued. So hopefully it will continue. It was just recently this year, I think, um continued for another five years and it has been for the last fifteen probably. Um but this allows people with more income, so you even up to well above thirty thousand dollars, whereas with M A you have to have that three thousand dollars or less. You are, you can have a much higher asset and income limit and still access a fair number of the same services as the elderly waiver. So you do not have to be on medical assistance. Actually, you can't be. Um and the intention is the same, to prevent or delay the nursing home, the nursing facility care, and preserve people's assets so that they don't have to spend down to that three thousand dollar limit to access services. Um most of the like the service menu is a little bit shorter than the elderly waiver service menu, but there are still many services available to people. Um with the personal cares, the home delivered meals, transportation, the caregiver supports are still there and there's a host of others.
Their lifeline button.
Yeah, yep, the purse buttons. Um and we have about twenty A C clients right now in Meeker County.
And also, so if you go into a home or whatever, say somebody has a hospital stay and I think somebody goes to check to make sure they have railings or then you find out their assets are too high, but you also work, say they're a veteran, right? So you'll say, well, you're a veteran. They can help you get the server, you help them through that even if their their assets are too high. So there's other options besides.
Yeah, we work closely with um.
Tim?
Tim and with the St. Cloud V A, with the Minneapolis V A, um because they also have case managers who can offer support and they have some of those in-home services, a pretty short menu. But if you are have enough of a service disability connection.
Right.
Those services are available to you.
So they pay whoever has to.
Yes, so if we have, we have to actually, because all of our programs are considered payer of last resort, right? So if somebody does have that V A connection and enough of a connection, we we have to check with the V A first to see what services they can ha- offer them. And then we can also offer our services. We just can't duplicate services.
You you find that out no matter what because there's other services.
Yeah, that's part of the assessment process is determining, are you a veteran? If the answer is yes, then we go to Tim and find out, you know, do they have a service connected disability? And if so, how much? And if that, you know, if it's high enough, can they have those in-home supports through the V A?
I think people need, I don't know if people are aware of the help that's actually out there, whether you're on a program or not. And I think it's important, I think that we do, I mean, I've learned a lot just because I'm in this position, but otherwise I may not have known, so it's important that people are aware of that. Because keeping them in the ho- home is always the best answer.
It it is, but I have an uncle who's ninety-five, lives in Long Lake. His wife has been gone for three, four years. And fit, he still drives and I'll tell you what, I'd I'd feel safe being a passenger. Still does his own meals and stuff, but he said I cannot spend another winter in this house.
Yeah.
He's lonely. He's got nobody to talk to.
Which is.
Yep.
You know, and.
And you hear that a lot from the community paramedic, right? They go in and people just want, you know.
And one thing.
To visit with somebody.
Yeah, one thing we have that is is only on the elderly programs is what's called a senior companion. Um so people who can go in, visit, play cards, read the newspaper, take them out for coffee, take them shopping, take them to visit other people. Um so not that, I don't know how, you know, if that would be enough socialization, but that is one thing specific to the over sixty-five programs, just to help people have socialization.
Well, he he says, I'd just like not to have to eat a meal every day alone.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, we forget about, so my other uncle who's ninety-seven, he lives with his daughter and son-in-law. There's a distinct difference in those two.
Mm-hmm.
Um at ninety-seven, sharp as a tack, but he's so much more social.
Yes, agreed.
Than Dean is, Dean's social, don't misunderstand him. He still does good conversation, but just doesn't have the opportunity.
I think that was a very, very negative part of Covid for the elderly. I mean, how many months in the nursing home or whatever where they couldn't see their family but through a window?
Or in their own homes.
Or in their own homes. And I I recall when the vaccine first came out and I went to the hospital, we had a clinic and I was taking people down in the wheelchairs if they couldn't make it. And some of them were in tears saying I can finally have Christmas with my with my children, which is awful. It was changed my whole mind about some things.
How is staffing for these programs? I mean, we're offering some great services, but that is, I I mean, my mom was in geriatric care. She was in R N. And this was twenty years ago when they had staffing issues. Is there any?
That depends on the program. Um out here in Meeker County, finding providers can be hard and that's something we really try to like bring in new, right? We have a monthly meeting where we try to bring a new provider and just get people willing to work out here, but that can be hard because most of the agencies we're working with come from the metro. Um some from the Sterns, St. Cloud, a few from Hutch, McLeod, but all majority metro. And some are just absolutely not willing to drive out here. Um so there's a few programs specifically, um I H S in-home, individualized home supports. Um I H S is one where we really struggle. And that is one for the under sixty-five that would give them that companionship, that socialization, that assistance with going to pay bills or going to the bank or going to the.
Building their own skills.
Yeah, building those, yeah. Um we really struggle finding providers for that. Sometimes homemaking's a major issue. Sometimes we have homemakers, sometimes we have none. How to grow that out here in rural Meeker is just been a struggle.
The other thing that's happened with the new the new P C A program is that um now family and friends can sometimes be paid.
Yes.
Caregivers. And that, I think, is a response to a statewide shortage and in staffing patterns, um and allowing people to still have their needs met. And maybe that caregiver then can work a little bit less so they have time to care for their parents or whatever it is, you know.
Yeah, that is, I mean, P C As could be family, but now P C As can be spouses or children, C F S S. Um so that hopefully it increases the number of options we have to have those caregivers because that.
So we require some training though, right? If it's gonna be a parent or a child.
Background checks, fingerprinting. Um there there's definitely requirements to being that person and being that paid caregiver. But yes, and it's specifically now a parent can be that paid caregiver for a child.
Right.
Which sometimes allows that parent to not have to work outside the home so that they can provide the care that that child needs in the home.
But they still need special training on how to lift them or, you know, if they're badly disabled. Depending on what they're doing, but here's always been my dream. We have, I always hear about people, oh, this person is on welfare or whatever. So I'm thinking, if we have people that just can't hold down an eight-hour a day job, maybe we could get them to go mow somebody's lawn. Or, you know, some bu- or maybe we could get them to go vacuum someone's house or spend an hour playing cards with them. And I'm sure there would be ten million legal legal reasons we can't do it, background checks. But wouldn't that be good?
Mm-hmm.
For them as well as, so get that done, Tina. I just think it's an answer to a lot of things because there's there's a certain element. Somebody called me, told me from social service there and there is, there's an element of our population that we're always gonna have to take care of. That's just the way it is and we should. But I think the the debate is always, who is that, right? But if we have people that can't do that, I just think there's ways to do this where it helps them because I think that helps, I think everyone needs something to do. And then also saves us some money financially, maybe.
I have a question. There was um it and maybe this is not it something that you have been involved with, but there used to be a senior center.
Yep.
Out at the Civic Arena.
Yes.
What happened to that is that it so that we no longer have that that asset? I believe we're a gathering place.
They used to have a director and they'd go out and play cards and have lunch.
Yes, because I I I do know an elderly person in the St. Cloud area. They have what's called the Whitney Center and they gather there and they play cards a couple of times a week. And it's a very um a social time for them. And is that something that?
So they have the same same thing out in Grove City called Grove City Care.
Yeah, that's a wonderful organization.
Yes, they meet at that, I don't even know what that building is, but they're they're main hub.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's the old school.
Mm-hmm.
What is it?
It's the old school.
Okay, so they meet there, they have meals there, they play cards, they make cards, like greeting cards, they have games, they have.
They have foot clinics, they put, yeah, they do things.
Clinic, so that's awesome.
It's a hub, yes.
That's Grove City.
Yes.
And not all of our people can drive or get rides to Grove City. So and then McLeod has the one at the uh civ- community center, what's that building called in Hutch? They have the same big senior center inside there that is also a hub of activity. But we would love to have one back here in Litchfield.
I think it used to be at, didn't it used to be?
Civic Arena?
Civic Arena. And was it still going before Covid?
It wa- you know, I i- in my first career with Woodlands, I used to take someone there every week. Um because we were working on finding social and it was great. And the meals were pretty good and nutritious.
I wish we could start that again.
And it was really reasonable. It, they do have, so it, there's a the replacement, I guess, for that, which isn't a full replacement, is that um I think it's Zion that does the, they cook meals there.
Yeah, but they just do meals, don't they?
Yes, well, and I think that the volunteers delivering try and visit, but it's not, it's not replacing that. Um I'm trying to think of the program that ran that out at the Civic Arena, if that was also L S S or if it was.
I I just remember twenty-some, like, I don't know how long you're talking about, but they had a regular director that came in and supervised and they had something going on. They'd have a speaker, maybe they had all cards, do something for, I don't know, an hour or two. But you're right, sociali- socialization is so important.
You know, something we gotta keep our eye on to the future too is if that hospital remodel goes through and we get done, we may have a chance to capture a couple of buildings too.
We don't own those clinics, just so you know.
No, I'm just saying, we may have an opportunity. I wanna keep that very clear. But that's the kind of thing that, you know, the city may wanna jump into or someone else to um create something like this.
Well, and building, I think, to your point, building an intergenerational, inner capacity, right? Like we, you know, building in load, an opportunity for a number of people to come together. And, you know, um Paul always said this and I agree, Meeker County has the just such an altruistic community. People want to help, they want to know what they can do. They want to be able to participate financially and they wanna give their time too. It's not just, oh, let me write a check, right? Which time is often the harder part of that equation. Um so I do feel like there would be a number of possibilities and we've talked about, you know, childcare could potentially be intermixed with that. I mean, there's a lot to dream for, right? Um I think it's always the the who, how and how much are always the questions. Um but some of those opportunities, I think, despite the fact that we have the budgeting shortfalls when it's when it's organization and it's volunteerism, you know, we still have some opportunity there because that doesn't, that doesn't have the quite the price to take.
We have to find the right spot, the right people that would support it, you know? People always want, talk about preventive care, this, I can.
This would be preventive.
This would be prevent, my dad was ninety-six, he lived three blocks from me and every time I probably told, every time I went there, it didn't matter if I stayed an hour, three or two or ten minutes, he'd say, are you leaving already? You just got here. I'll, and that just rings in my mind because he just wanted company. And he was fortunate, I was close and my brother was close and he would still jump in the car and drive once in a while. But you know, it if only we could find that, I bet you the nursing, because what does a nursing home cost us for people? That is an expensive part of our care, isn't it?
My father-in-law wasn't even here and I think it's cheaper down there. It was in Westbrook for a month. It was eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, and that and that's one of county costs that that's levy dollars, isn't it or not? Or is that just out of home placement?
People under sixty-five in the nursing.
If for a, at a percentage and after a certain amount of days, ninety days.
After eighty days. Um.
But when you run out of money, then they're ours. So for us to do things like spend some money upfront that way might be a lot smarter than the way it's going now.
So the the Litchfield Area Recreation Center, the L R C, uh they just hired a director. I don't know if they have any plans or some sort of senior program, but it's a good opportunity for potential partnership there. And so I think it's something we can follow up with them on and see what their ideas are.
That would be good.
That would be a great idea.
It's a great location and, you know, it's a new facility, it's the exact same places where.
Well, that's actually where it used to be.
Exactly.
Yes, yes.
Be a great idea.
That would be something to pursue, yes.
I think that Lakeside um in Dassel does some community outreach stuff too. I'm not as familiar with their programming currently, but um. The Dassel Library has a back room where the seniors meet periodically. Uh Darren, I'm not sure if you. They, I know they do some things there in Dassel. Um I don't know how it's, actually, I think they meet at the, what's that? Agra Building or whatever it's called.
Oh, the, well, you know what?
Erga.
I think it's what it's called because remember when we had that meeting there and we had to move or something because the.
They were doing a meal there, I think. So they periodically have something.
But yeah, Thursday afternoons, they usually have some coffee and conversation at the at the Erga, at the History Center.
All of that as well, okay.
So they have a few opportunities, but again, people in Litchfield can't necessarily get to Dassel. So transportation, if you can help me out there, that's probably our biggest issue, especially for older people.
There's there's the chair of the C C T right there. He can help you. Or, you know, Andrew Zion fixes the meals. They have a beautiful kitchen in there.
Yep.
They have a lot of room. Maybe that would be something to consider too.
Yeah. Okay.
Great programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's your team. Do a great job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You just keep teaching us people things every week, you know, I mean.
What's that?
I just feel, you know, you keep teaching us. We learn something every time, you know?
There is so much.
It's always good for me too because when you don't, there's so much nuance when you don't work in that area. So it's always good to review all of those things. Thank you so much.
Which from a community member standpoint, they don't know what you guys have, not their fault.
I think.
Well, it's complicated.
I think part of the issue is getting the word out on what we can actually can and can't.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and Missy and I just talked about that too, she's, last year, I think they started and I believe a year after, there's a senior day at work there and they're doing rooms out there. Specific to that day, they've been in the Grove City Care's um has a resource there, they've gone out there.
They have a great model over in Grove City. I know, I think Steve is pretty active with it. Whatever you can get from them and and if you can work any programs with the hospital, they're, you know, we're partners, so.
Yeah, and and um Mary Ellen was talking to me about that, building that partnership. And we are, I'm part of that meeting now monthly as well. Um I know our nursing staff just went over there. They're gonna start visiting some parents and babies. Um you know, we're, there's just so many opportunities. So I think um there's there's a lot, right? We have to make sure our focus is narrow enough that we can actually accomplish these things and have a group of people in charge of that area um to make that progress. But I think these are all things that when we work collaboratively and we pull the right people in the room, we can make that progress regardless sometimes of the financials support is nice, but it's not always a problem.
Right, absolutely.
We'll be focusing on that as much as we can, I think, moving forward with with more limited budgets and.
And I know you're not busy, so.
If I could um keep having some kind of unexpected reasons I have to be away, so I, which was yesterday was one of those days too, so um hopefully I can just, yeah, stay here and stay a little focused would be helpful too.
Will we promise not to send any emails asking you what you're doing? There won't be any random checkups.
No random moment checks from the commissioners.
Not from us, maybe Andrew.
Um yeah, Andrew, I'll email him at eight o'clock and then he emails me back.
I text him at seven, so, yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you for your time, Tina.
And Andrew Letson has some exciting news for us.
Yay.
This is exciting.
Really excited uh about this next item that we have in the country and that's appointment of Heather Lemieux as our finance director. As you all know, Sharon Early, who's been with the county for um three and a half decades, is is going to be retiring here in August and we've been working to uh find her replacement for several months. We've been working to, uh, find her replacement for several months, um, we are really excited about, um. Heather, who is a, has applied and has accepted the position, uh, she, uh, was interviewed by the Personnel Committee. Currently is employed with Wright County as their Assistant Finance Director, has previous experience with Sherburne County in a similar role and also with the Office of the State Auditor. So, as I've said a couple of times now, when I envisioned what our ideal candidate would be, Heather's better. And really excited about the opportunity of bringing her on board and, um, having her work with the team, so. With that, I would recommend the appointment of Heather as our finance director.
Mister Chair.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Mister Chair, I move to approve the appointment of Heather Lemieux as a finance director. At a wage of fifty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents per hour, effective July tenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vanort, second by Commissioner Olberg, is there any discussion?
I'll just say Paul and I interviewed her and I, you're gonna love her, she's just really a, um, kind of a powerhouse comes. To my, I mean, she, so, she seemed very relaxed at the interviews, sometimes they're long and tough, especially you don't know what Paul's gonna ask. He just pops up, I don't know.
I, I, I think a nice way to describe her was, she has got a responsibility like this right now.
Yep.
And for so many different areas of the finance in Wright County and she's gonna be coming down to this. But that's gonna allow us, or Andrew maybe, to look at, okay, can we broaden what we do down there? And help other departments, so, um, yeah, I, I'm just so pleased.
Well qualified.
Very resp- very well qualified, very responsive in the interview, I just.
And when Beth says a powerhouse, not overwhelming.
No, I didn't mean it that way, I just mean the questioning and was like, yeah, very calm. And I think she's probably gonna take some work away from you a little bit, maybe. I think she's just gonna do great.
Fantastic. Very well in the group that we already have, so. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Uh, the next item we have is setting a public hearing to consider an ordinance establishing slow no-wake re- uh, restrictions on designated lakes. So, uh, this ties back to the resolution that you approved earlier, this would put something in place permanently. One of the things that we need to coordinate with, um, on is any lakes that cross the county line. Require, um, a s- the same regulation being placed by that shared jurisdiction, so in this case, other counties.
Co- Collinwood's a perfect example.
Francis is another, Cronus, Bell, Lake Bell, yeah, those are the ones that. Um, so I'll reach out to our, our counterparts in those communities, we can put language in the ordinance that basically states. If this exists, you know, similarly in this county, then this is in, in effect. So, uh, we'll be able to put this together and have this ready for, uh, consideration, basically what would happen is. Once the water reaches the ordinary high water line and stays there for a period of time. Then this slow no-wake restriction goes in place, once it drops point one foot below that ordinary high water line for three days. Then it comes off and then it would allow the sheriff to go put up the signs as, as necessary, so.
And normally, it's May and June that are the issues.
Yep.
Normally.
Normally.
Who knows what.
I can remember other years, but not quite this bad, do people pay attention? Do they have, always been giving you, put up a sign, but.
I, recreational boats that don't realize how close they are to shore, I don't think they do it on purpose, but most people are pretty mindful.
I, I was on a lake this last weekend to watch someone speed through a no-wake zone, that, but, that, it happens, right?
Yeah.
I, I think if most people are respectful about it, then you, you largely solve the problem, so.
So, with that, I would look for a motion.
Mister Chair, I move to set a public hearing during the regular meeting on August fifth, twenty twenty-five to consider an ordinance. Imposing slow no-wake watercraft restrictions on designated lakes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Samke, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Vanort, is there any further discussion? Um, today is the day the, the new law is going to affect the state of Minnesota about how old you can be to be. An operator too, isn't it? Doesn't have anything to do with this, but.
Operator of what?
Like a personal watercraft.
How, what is the age? I didn't even know.
If you're sixteen through twenty-one, you have to have a permit?
So they're gonna teach them some safety?
And they have to have safety classes and I think it's a good thing, so, um.
So if they're on a, uh, one of those, what do they call them?
Personal watercraft.
Water jet, or jet ski?
Jet ski, they have to have one too.
So, I, I don't think it's a, a bad thing at all, so. But that doesn't really relate to the motion, other than you get those personal watercraft, they can have a bigger wake sometimes than the boats do, so.
Remember sitting in little rowboats out there fishing when they came by, those big boats, that's my dad and my boat.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Andrew, your report.
Uh, yeah, I actually have several things to report to you today, um. First off, uh, we're, we're coming up on the end of our remodel project, uh, it continues to move along well. The, we're on pace to have dispatch cut over on July twenty-eighth, it's kind of the, the next piece that's really the. It's holding up a couple of other parts of the project and so we really need that to happen, there's still some, as I, as I write here. Opportunities that may push that date back, basically what needs to happen is the circuit needs to be, uh, installed and tested. If that circuit fails, then there's more work that needs to occur, but as long as everything works well. July twenty-eighth is the date that we're targeting to cut over and have dispatch be in the new space.
So during that cut over time, like Candy Ohio picks up our calls for us, or are we still able to?
No, so what will happen is there's a, a relatively brief window, I, I don't have all the details specific on it, but there's a brief window which Candy Ohio will take over that. Cut over occurs and then, you know, our staff are in the new space, um, operating, um. Typically, what we do is we have two circuits that run into dispatch, we're gonna be running dispatch on a single circuit through Minnesota IT. Uh, and then the secondary circuit, which is run through a company called Lumen. Um, has been one of the things that's been delaying all of this, we have the equipment now. But we're still gonna run with the plan of getting things set up on the single circuit, if that circuit were to fail, which is unlikely, it would kick over to Candy Ohio. So if you call nine one one, there will always still be someone there to answer the phone, uh, it just. If there is a failure on our end, it may end up being an operator, which has always been our, our fail-safe backup, they always have. Um, the, uh, there's a handful of, of stuff that continues to, um, kind of start up and get worked on. Uh, there's a, a, a wall that's gonna separate the, um, the work release inmate space from the, the larger dormitory. They're actually over there today, uh, working on getting that installed, it's gonna be about a twenty-four hour installation. To put that in, I saw the mason outside with a pile of block and I figured that was a good sign, uh, he was waiting for someone to open the door to the jail when I drove by. Um, they're working on putting up, um, signage this week, uh, so the, uh, exterior signage, it'll say Meeker County Justice Center. Plus all the interior signage identifying the different departments and offices where people should be going, that's all going in this week. Um, the, the little bit of exterior work that still needs to happen is, uh, pouring the sidewalk in front of the, the new entrance and. There's, um, some patching of the, um, the parking lot right there that needs to occur. We're gonna do a larger parking lot resurfacing project, the hope was that we were gonna get it on this fall. Public Works, uh, engineering staff is doing the design and the, um, the, the bidding on that project. Uh, but because of where they were at with the exterior work, they weren't able to get out and survey and do all of that before having to hit out on the road projects. If they can't get it in this fall, there's still a small window where it might happen, it'll happen in the spring, so it's still gonna happen, it might just not be as quick as we hoped it would be. We are, once dispatch moves over, the last things that are gonna have to happen is some cosmetic work. In the, um, new records and conference room space, uh, and once that is done, we're a hundred percent done with construction, so. Targeting end of August at this point, the thought is that that, those two pieces will take about three to four weeks to complete and. Then we'll be buttoned up and out of here and all happy, so.
So the CA's office is a hundred percent done now?
Yes, they're a hundred percent done, uh, I think they got their, um, last bit of furniture that they were waiting on last week. Uh, there's still some furniture that we're waiting on, on, uh, the other side of things, um, but it's, it's moving along. Um, budget wise, we're looking good, um, uh, I would ant- I anticipate that we're gonna have. Couple hundred thousand dollars left over at the end of it, um, so not a lot, but a, a little something to help with some of that. So one of the things that we had talked about at a previous work session was monument sign, uh, for in front of the building here and. Um, one of the, the things that I was asked to do was to get an updated, uh, plan of that and have that. Uh, and then also reach out to the, the tenants in the building to see about financial contributing to that, so I've reached out to each of them as well, I've heard back from one. Um, I've heard from two of them, one of them saying that, um, you, that the amount that I had asked for was, it's not something that they could cover, which I understand. Uh, we, we came to another agreement and then, uh, another one saying that they, something they've been interested in, but I haven't heard the, the formal yes on it yet, so. Once we hear back from all of that, we'll come back to you with a design and, uh, a cost estimate and we can make a decision, we'll, we'll do that as part of the budget process.
Can, uh, just clarify this in my mind, all entry into the courthouse or the justice center will be through the back?
It will be through the entrance off the parking lot.
Right.
Um, to go into the courthouse and then the jail, to go into the sheriff's office and the LPD, the records. Area, you'd still go through the entrance that you have been to that point, the entrance on Sibley will be locked to the public. Because the idea is we want people to go through the security checkpoint.
Okay, now, will we have a person there at that security checkpoint?
Yep.
Or is it specific hours?
Regular business hours.
Okay.
It's when he'll be there, it's what he's there now.
So what if we have a meeting in the evening over there, we won't be doing that?
So we can still have meetings in the evening over there, um, it will have to, uh, to coordinate that as well.
And will employees be allowed to come through the front with their cue cards?
Yes.
So if there's a, a checkpoint as you enter the building, will they still have that security on the upper level?
Courts level, no, this is replacing that.
That will replace that, perfect, okay.
Yep, so it provides that security for the whole building rather than.
And not just that one?
Yep, and so that security will be there when, you know, courts are functional.
Perfect, okay.
So with our, our badge, can you select, like say Cheryl wanted to have a badge that would scan her into. Such and such rooms, can you select just certain rooms?
Yes.
And give her access to?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's how all of them are set up.
Okay.
So, um, you know, like for example, um, you know, the. Our mate, well, I'm just gonna use our maintenance staff as an example, it's a bad example, they have access to everywhere because they need to go and maintain it, but. Um, you know, our Health and Human Services staff don't have access to get into the treasurer's office and the treasurer's staff don't have access to get in Health and Human Services. But they can all get into the building.
So I recall some trainings and I'm assuming all employees have had it where you stand beside an employee going in the door.
Yep.
And you say, you know, hold the door a minute, I forgot my.
When you do, if, when you do your know before trainings, that is often a topic that comes up in.
No, I know it does, but I'm saying, our employees, obviously you usually know whoever works there, but not always, right?
It's also, it's also not unique for many of the employees who work in that building already. Um, you know, the county attorney staff and the IT staff and even the court staff have all used the entrance that's off of the. The smaller part of the parking lot by the picnic table, they've used that for a long time and public doesn't have access to that space and so. Even if the public gets into that area, they can't get anywhere besides that and so they aren't just letting random people.
So, just for the sake of clarity, if on my badge. If I wanted to have just so I could scan into one of the meeting rooms up here, we could do that, so like if I had a night meeting. And got here, somebody wouldn't have to be here to open the door or anything, I could have my badge active?
So, um, it depends on the room because some of them don't have badges on them, but typically the answer is yes, we could have that set up.
Might be something to consider if you attend night meetings here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's something we could take a look at. Um, like for example, this room doesn't have a badge on it, so you can't come into this room if the door is locked.
So there's only a few of the meeting rooms.
The, the two hundred has one off of the door over here.
Okay.
Um, the multipurpose room downstairs, uh, downstairs does, um, so.
So that might be, it might be a good idea.
Yeah, we had to walk, you had HRA, HRA meeting that day and we had to walk through here to get to the room that we had.
Sure.
They were having a meeting, so, like, you know, excuse us, where's this?
So typically.
It wasn't a, we're doing.
I think it's not so bad when we're open, but if we're, if it's after hours, it, it's.
Typically evening meetings, unless they include someone from the county, we are all having all of those be down in the multipurpose room. For security purposes because the, the fire exit here leads through offices. Uh, and so there is a need to lock the spaces down if there are no meetings, the challenge becomes when. The folks who are normally here for, for maintenance or we, you know, had, uh, transition occur within maintenance. You know, there's things like that that causes some lack of communication sometimes, so folks are learning.
Well, it's something for us to consider as commissioners anyway.
Um, I, I received a copy of the draft strategic plan following our, uh, our work session that we had. Uh, we're continuing to review that, we, we are currently reviewing that with all of our department heads and we're gonna have a board discussion with that on August fifth, when all of you are back here together. Uh, so we'll have a draft plan to consider at that point, um, trying to get Dave to, to be able to come down for that as well. And then, um, after that, depending on how that conversation goes, we'll bring it back for adoption, either at the next meeting or have further conversation. Uh, on, at our next regular meeting on July fifteenth, we're gonna have a special work session early in the afternoon with the Litchfield City Council to talk about. The intersection of Highway twelve and Cassaw thirty-four, continue that conversation. They have asked to hold that joint meeting with us and, um, we, I have agreed, I hope you all agree as well. Maybe it'll just be.
I certainly do.
Yes.
Where will we have it?
What was the date on that?
On July fifteenth at one P M.
I might be gone, I might be gone as well.
Um.
And Steve is gone.
And Steve is gone.
Well, let me look, I can probably remote him, but.
I don't, am I held住了? Oh, that's the same day as the map meeting.
I'm sure I'll be gone.
What time did you say, one o'clock?
One.
I will, I will be here that day still, yes.
I can, I'll remote him.
And we're meeting on here, there?
I don't know if we found a specific spot, but we'll get a spot.
Good. Yeah, cuz the, uh, suicide prevention meeting is gonna be at that time too.
Um, we have budget meetings, uh, with departments next week, Cheryl got her binder today and she's very excited about that.
See that, she was.
The big beautiful binder.
Big beautiful binder.
That's a big beautiful.
Um, I'm gonna be on vacation this Thursday and, uh, as a reminder, we've been asked once again to help with Bingo at the County Fair on July thirty-first. Currently we have me, Stephen, Darren signed up for it, so Cheryl, I know you're out of town, but if either of you are, are interested, let me know.
Is that in the evening?
It is in. Yep.
Sorry to miss that, that would've been fun.
It is fun, that is my report.
Okay, committee reports, who would like to start today?
Mine's pretty quick, I'm like, um, I can go.
Okay, please.
Just had the, um, the, uh, Mid-Minnesota, um, Development Commission in Hector, um. Yeah, there's just. Yeah, they're working through various things, I don't know, it's, it's one of those things you learn on every, every time. Um, and then also before that was the, uh, Great River Energy. Meeting at the Opera House, uh, that was kind of interesting just seeing what the directions they were going with that and just hearing the. Concerns of di- different constituents about, you know, where the things were going or what it was gonna do to their, their, their rental prop. Rental, um, agriculture properties, um, but it just seemed like the, the engineers that were there were pretty helpful and. In terms of answering concerns and questions and, and even being open to some alternatives as well, so that was, I thought that was pretty positive. Um, um, I don't know if I talked about my Dassel City Council report, I think I did.
And you got it.
That was good, um, and I think that's all I've got.
Do you want me to go?
Please.
Um, so H R A met, um, a lot of discussions about their budget. Um, and they did have a question regarding the upcoming work session, will they have a chance to speak?
Yeah.
Yes.
That, that's the intent.
That's the intent, okay, um, they were just wondering how, what that would look like, that, what that meeting would look like, so. Um, and then they, um. You know, of course, with the budgeting, they're looking at some increases there in their requests. Um, to, with the extension committee and they did, um. Uh, we discussed the Farm Family that we chose and part of that, um. I suppose you'd call it a subcommittee, a committee of the extension committee, um, but, um, we had many, um. Really, really good options, some of them have been, um, nominated. Some of them have been, um, nominated for many years in a row. But, um, we just really liked the Algon families, um, ju- on so many levels. Their participation, their work as a family, their, their work as, um, environmentally conscious farmers. Um, and it, multi-generational, um, it was, you know, a, a, a location that, you know, your particular, that district, we have, haven't had farm family representation there for just a bit. So for, for a variety of reasons, they were an excellent choice, so. Um, again, the budget was discussed and they also, everyone's looking to increase their requests. We'll see how that goes. Um, then, um, Pioneer Land, uh, also had a, um, a meeting, um, discussed their budget. I did miss that meeting, so, uh, I had a family obligation, so I didn't attend that. And then, um, yeah, that's it for me.
Beth?
Well, I've got a lot of stuff, but I won't bore you with all of it. I'll just do some highlights. And Paul, if you're involved in the same meetings, you can add to it. We had our Prime West. I don't think we've had reports since Prime West.
Well, we did. Remember, we skipped them two weeks ago.
So the big news coming out of Prime West, well, I'm, I'm on financial too, so they're doing some budget management recommendations again. Um, finding themselves losing another, but the upside is they have a lot of money in reserve. However, you know, you can't keep doing what we've been doing. And some of it's 'cause of Medicare enrollment. There's a bunch of reasons. Um, did Karma go through? I haven't heard anymore about that. It did. So now we have to figure out how helpful that's gonna be. That's this other side of that. Um, uh, let's see, personnel update is that our, uh, director, Jim Persvila, is retiring. And he's been, do you know how long he's been with them?
Since the beginning.
Yeah. Was he the first one, maybe? So that was, caught me kinda by surprise, I guess, but he's given us a, uh, a year and.
Almost a, almost a full year.
Almost a full year.
Yep.
And he has a great succession plan in place, so hopefully that will work out. Um, I had a class of comp meeting. I think we discussed that already. Um, I had a Shack meeting remotely. Um, of course, a lot of the, a lot of the talk was about, you know, what's gonna happen to public health with the federal budget. There was also, they think there's gonna be a special session on the state. Do you think so? Yeah, I think so too. Um, they've talked about public health funding for cannabis, prevention grants, which is, you know, I'm not gonna get into why this whole thing is ridiculous. They pass it and now we're supposed to.
Deal.
Deal with it, so. Um, there was a, there was a, uh, some talk about the anxious generation, the public health threat. And when, you know, I believe that. I believe that we have created, because of social media and things that we put on children and the ones that were adults now, that we probably have become an anxious generation, so. The other thing is, um, they're gonna, and, and I'm not sure I've got this down. This is the first Shack meeting I've actually sat all the way through. Um, they're testing delivery models for foundational health. So they're gonna have regional, but data is very important in public health now. It's important in a lot of healthcare also. So they're gonna create a regional model where people from different areas can get it, data, information, et cetera, et cetera. They had some discussion about that. Um, they'll have a dashboard when this all gets created and you'll be able to go on there, you know. This is just top level for me and understanding all that. So that was kinda interesting. Um, what else did I add? CMJTS, the people that were here, I think, on our last board at our work session and presented, so. Um, they kinda caught us up on all that. Um, they're, they seem to be doing well. They're worried about funding like everybody else. I had a Woodland Joint Powers Board meeting that, a lot of that discussion was about budgeting also. Uh, and I think, um, they're still meeting with the social service directors from the different counties to find out, um, where that's gonna go. So more to come on that, I guess. Um, they're talking about, what they were talking about was federal funding that Medicaid enrollment loss from the House reconciliation bill would be seventeen percent in Minnesota. So I don't know what they, um, but is that even all se- I mean, it's settled, but it's not, right? Because we had federal money that trickles down into that too, so.
The Senate is still, I mean, they're working through the bill as we speak right now. And so we'll see what version they come up with and if House passes it and.
It's hard to make any direction.
It is.
There's a lot of uncertainty right there.
They have a scholarship, they, uh, called the Bonnage Scholarship, um, six, they had six applications. Uh, three of them were working toward doctoral degrees and they selected Callie Coleman as a recipient. I can't remember where she was from and I didn't, uh, jot it down, but that's something that was created a few years ago. I was on the committee once, so it's, it's fun. Um, and then I, I had a Hot Creek Shelter meeting. I also had a hospital finance meeting, but you heard the same thing I did there, so. Um, Hot Creek has had, we got part of a tent or something of a, a state of a farm in Ranville County. And I think it's been put up for sale and that sale, and I don't know the dollar amount that amounts to. For us, there's several different nonprofits that she left it to, so there's been a lot going on with that. Hopefully, it's gonna be sold here shortly. And then we had a discussion about trying to create a business so that we have recurring income, um, as a nonprofit. We just struggle and struggle and struggle with the animals. And so, um, I'll update you on that as I hear more. So I think that's what I had.
Well, I apologize because I did not bring my calendar and I cannot, we had a Ucap meeting last week. And, um, they're just preparing for potential possibilities like everybody else is, as they work their budget. Um, we had a big discussion on our investments. And, um, I think it got a little off track because we don't deal in cryptocurrency.
No.
But somebody wanted us to write a provision into our policy about crypto. And so it protracted a long discussion, which finally I just made a motion to table it because obviously we weren't in a position to.
Wasn't going anywhere.
Well, we can't, you know, if you're gonna do a policy, you really shouldn't try and write that policy at.
At a meeting.
At a board meeting when you got so many people having input. So we just, we just.
You know, it's an interesting discussion because I was thinking about that after you, you and I talked about it. There's been times that the shelter has gotten shares and, you know, somebody passes away and says, I give you a hundred shares of this, that, or the other thing. And I don't know if we have a policy on it. I know since I've been on there, we just sold them, right? But it does, it is things you don't always think about until it happens. And should you have a policy on it? I don't know.
It, they got a donation once at Ucap in crypto. They just immediately converted it to cash.
Yeah.
And invested it.
Probably be what I would think.
So, um, but it led to an interesting discussion because you've got thirty people that are, have a different opinion on.
When I know about crypto, you can put in a symbol, so.
And I know nothing about that either when it comes, I've never done anything. So that's really, um, I can only go to my most recent, I, I was busy with other things, but I, um, like Beth said, we were at Prime West, we had a hospital board meeting, but she's covered those very well. Um, the big thing with Prime West is, um, how quickly they implement Karma. Because we would have to staff up a little bit. Because if we're the only provider in twenty-four counties at Prime West and all the blue plus, the lead blue plus and come to Prime West, we have to be staffed to handle that additional members. So, um, it'll be interesting now how it rolls out, whether it rolls out twenty-six or if, or if it's rolls out.
I think they talked about twenty-six, but maybe not. That seems a lot, a little sore.
You gets, you only got six months to get everything.
Yeah, probably, or it'd probably be twenty-seven.
We did have a, a very intriguing discussion at Prime West about some, uh, cost-saving measures. Um, and there again, you have twenty-four different commissioners and twenty-four different opinions of how to do it. But in the end, it was a twenty-two to two vote and they moved forward to do them. But it was a spirited discussion that lasted half hour.
Yep.
And you covered in, in finance prior to that.
We did. We did.
So.
You know, and everybody's got, everybody can look at and say, but I have that. But in the end, you have to do, you know, and they do a good job. They don't mess around when the, when the start, the start, they make cuts wherever they can, so. Thinking ahead.
Well, that's it for me. Is there any other business to come before us? Hearing none, we will adjourn.